Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Otero County Commission meeting of Thursday, October 10, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order and have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Markworth. [S02] Here. Commissioner Matherly. [S02] Here. Commissioner Borella. [S02] Here.
And we're going to have the invocation by Mitch today.
Dear Lord, we're just glad to be here together today. Lord, we just thank you for being able to live in the greatest comforts in the world, Lord. We just ask for your comfort for those that are struggling in Florida right now and the other areas that have been hit by these natural disasters. Lord, we just pray for safety for the rescuers and just comfort for those that are waiting to be rescued. We pray for wisdom here today as we conduct the business of the county. I thank you for those that are so willing to serve. Amen.
You'll fall within the book for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendships among American cultures. Let me get a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I don't see the sheriff, so we'll skip over him and have John Barney.
Good morning, Commissioner. How are you today?
Good morning. Good.
I'm John Barney, 911 director. For the month of September, we did 2,400 911s into the center, 1,200 officer lines, and 8,400 admin lines, with a total of about 12,000 calls into the 911 center this month, our last month. We currently have one supervisor position open, seven communication officer positions currently open. Our events that we did for the month of September, we were at the 911 stair climb with Alamoa Fire Department early morning, and there was actually a really good turnout. Wasn't expecting people from other counties to be there, but El Paso was there, Dona Enana was there, Mesclero came down. I think there's some from Riajo. So we participated in the Cloudcroft Fire Prevention Meeting that they had up there, and we were able to test our new Genesis system out with where we're able to actually push iPaws notifications, where your phone actually alerts, like an Amber Alert or something like that. So we're actually able to do that, and some phones were turned off, but because we sent it out as a test notification, you're able to turn those test notifications off on your phone. So a lot of people did not get those. We were out the fair all three days. It was good turnout. It did get a little windy at times, so we had to take some of our stuff down, but we did have a really good turnout from -- we were actually with OES and US together, so it actually made it a little bit more fun and interesting and more conversations happening and everything. So it was actually really a good time. We were at the Apple Festival. Same thing, OES and US, we were up there. We did participate in the Alamoa Police Autism event they had. I think this was the first one that they did, and they did invite us to it. We did participate. We did do our child safety ID cards, which I think was a huge hit. We, I think, did a process of about 35 of those cards out to families that came through, and we were able to talk about some of the new features, information, where their favorite, you know, people may be able to go towards like a park or the stores if they travel, and it also adds a photo. And from there, we can actually download it as a PDF and send it to our responders who are going to that house or that person they're trying to find. And then, as you may have seen, we are doing our TVRDA Halloween decorating contest throughout our building, just something to get our dispatchers involved and have fun. So as you drive past our building, you will see part of our building is decorated outside, our lobby is decorated, and throughout the building, it is Halloween season in dispatch. So I encourage you guys to go vote for our dispatchers. We're going to do something for the shift that gets the most votes and everything like that. And feel free to stop by, too. We have went live on our prepared translation, so every single call that comes into the 911 center gets live-transcripted currently. So also, not only we listen to it, we can actually see what is being said. It also pulls out key points, so if the dispatcher misses something, we can put keywords in there, like gun, or fire, or CPR, or unresponsive, and it'll listen or make -- pay attention a little bit, what's about to happen on this. Prepared is working on some other cool little things, and I've been working with them to kind of hopefully we can implement mortars or quicker and everything like that. In our training currently, we didn't do much training this month, but we had two new hires start. They are in their second week of orientation. Their next week will be their last half week, and then they'll be live on the floor with our CTOs. And we did send our training coordinator and our QA specialist down to El Paso to sit with their training division to learn about how to implement a training program. Granted, they're a lot larger agency, but they did learn a ton of stuff down there that will help our center out tremendously. Other than that, that is all I have for this month.
How hot was it in that box?
Really hot.
I didn't know that was you when you came up and kind of gathered me up. Who was this person?
Yes. No, it was -- it gets hot in there really quick. So actually, at the Apple Festival, it was actually cool when we went around. I was thankful for it to be cool that day when we were up there, so.
Glad to see you out at the fair.
Absolutely.
Hot out there.
Thank you, guys.
Madam Chairman, we have a public hearing scheduled for 9:05.
Oh, well, then we better do that. Okay. We will discuss your public comments and consider ordinance 24-03 regulating the sitting.
If we could invite Dean Williamson forward to kind of briefly run it, run through it for you.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. As Ms. Hiltner said, I'm Dean Williamson. I'm your wireless tower consultant, and today we're taking public comments on the -- we'll also have two resolutions, one for fees and one for small wireless facilities, which is 5G. Those will be in separate resolutions. So just a couple of words about the ordinance. The county has not had an ordinance up to this point, and this started with me meeting with and talking to your safety officer for the county, specifically with -- he brought up a tower collapse, said it happened a few years back. And so we talked about this, our capability and what we bring with this ordinance is safety for these towers, inspections, insurance, bonding, structural analysis, things of that nature. So this ordinance addresses primarily safety, and it keeps the county kind of on a level playing field with the applicants that will come in, the applicants other than what they already have. So for instance, when AT&amp;T wants to come in and modify an existing tower, they'll do all these studies, usually in the background. They'll do structural analysis, soil studies, all the things that the ordinance calls. It's just a matter of collecting that information. Then we review it. We make a recommendation to only inspect the towers to make sure that they're complying with everything that's in the ordinance. And that's all geared to safety, things like signage, fencing, that they've actually done what they said they were going to do in the plans, and radiation compliance, things of that nature. So that's what's up for proposal. I don't know if there are any public comments. We did have some interest from one possible applicant, AT&amp;T, that said they were going to review the ordinance and have some comments, but I haven't gotten anything from them since then. And so I'm happy to take any questions.
I don't really have any right now.
I just have one. Do you know, is it, I didn't find it in here. I know the FAA has certain restrictions on heights around airports.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you check into the Alamoa Airport?
Sure. It's not just airports. The FAA has height restrictions of 200 feet. You'll see a lot of 199-foot towers or 200-foot towers. Anything above that has to be lit and with the strobe lights and things, and most jurisdictions don't want that. So companies typically try to build them under that. When you talk about getting close to the airport, that's a different process. The FAA has terminal procedures. They call it Terps procedures. Let's say, okay, there's a tower here, there's a tower here. If a company tries to build a tower too close to the airport, that would interfere with an approach. That would certainly not be allowed. And if it is a smaller tower, I mean, there's towers on the airport itself. If it's a smaller tower, they're incorporated into its area.
We have Mitch Hibbard. Oh, I didn't know that was your last name.
I knew that.
I like just Mitch, Mitch from PVT. Did you want to comment on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Come on up so we can hear you in the microphone.
He can answer, so you just stay put.
Sure.
So we are a rural telecommunications provider. We don't do much wireless. We do provide fiber backhaul to those towers, and we are certainly for the increased tower coverage. We're certainly for more mobile coverage, and we get the fiber business from it. So we are not against any of the wireless providers. I didn't know that the ordinance didn't exist before. It reads very similar to Lincoln County, to Chavas County, and Eddy County, where we do have towers. So I think the ordinance is good, and we would stand in support of that. One of the concerns with it, there's been a couple new towers go up in the Mayhill area, and one of those is in really close proximity to the highway. And we're getting a lot of calls about it because we're the telecommunications provider in the area and complaints about it, and it's not our tower. I mean, we don't. And so it is not in compliance with several things in this ordinance and also with the setbacks from the Federal Highway Administration. So I don't know what you do about an existing tower. I mean, it's not fired up, but it is built. And one of the things, just from what I know about towers and our towers that we have in Chavas County and Eddy County, is any of the equipment is always covered with what's called an ice bridge. And so as that tower's high up there, you get the freezing fog, especially in the mountains. There is some ice sloughing off of that tower, and so it doesn't damage the equipment. They have these ice bridge, you know, devices that are over both the cabling and all of the equipment. My concern with that tower that's in close proximity to the road is is any of that ice sloughing off, a little bit of a south wind, and it's in the highway. And that's not a PVT position. That's a personal position. I have a lot of friends and family that drive that road. Just some concerns there.
Well, I wouldn't think it'd be good to be that close to the highway. If they get topple over, it's going to hit the road.
That's the Federal Highway Administration guidance, is that they have to be in a clear space from the highway. Those are there for having not having an ordinance, I guess. And I don't know what you do about it retroactively.
Yeah. So if I can, this is a very common problem in many, many jurisdictions, is tower setback. Before ordinance, before a county or whoever has jurisdiction over that tower, they don't have an ordinance. They can't specify any setbacks. So if a tower company comes in, buys a piece of property, or leases a piece of property, they can build their tower. And there's not much you can do after the fact. I will say that once the ordinance is in place and either a co-locator, meaning, you know, if AT&amp;T's not on that tower and they want to come in and co-locate, can't say you have to go in reverse, because the ordinance says the setback is 110%, tower height plus 10% from any property line, highway, anything like that. So had the ordinance been in place at the time, helping to build those for ice bridges, generally speaking, those are always included for carriers who want to protect their equipment just as much as the tower won't fall. I do want to point out one thing that's in the ordinance. Tower owners and cell companies will, applicants will typically try to load a tower up to 105% of its capacity, its structural capacity. Your ordinance, if you pass, limits that to 100%. Causes some problems with applicants because the engineers will come in and say, no, our engineering says it can withstand 105% of this wind and, you know, this ice load and things like that. But your ordinance is adding that extra bit of safety. I mean, do you want a tower next to your house that is at 105% of its structural capacity? Certainly you don't. So that is one small thing that may help, you know, with the, that tower that's close to the road, but you can't go backwards, unfortunately. Mitch, what company were you with?
I'm with Penasco Valley Telephone. We're a rural telephone cooperative.
I'd love to have your service, man, if I could get fiber in Albuquerque.
So if that tower is built, that existing tower there, and if it encroaches in the state highway department rigs, that would be, wouldn't that fall under?
That would be up to the state to fight that one. I mean, the county could certainly go down the road of trying to, if you issued a permit at the time, even if you didn't, you could go down that road, but, you know, it would be a long legal battle, and I would say you'd probably lose. But again, going back after the fact is pretty tough to do. And I wouldn't want to get out of line here and let the county attorney speak to, you know, an ordinance that goes into effect and then going backwards and trying to enforce it. I've never seen it happen. And again, this is a common issue in many, many counties with towers that were built 10, 20 years ago, and, you know, either there might not have been a road there, or a house, or whatever. So.
This doesn't encroach on the highway right away. It's right up against their fence. And the only reason I brought up ice bridges is not to say that's something that should be required. Of course, they're going to take care of their stuff, but they are there for a reason, and it's because the ice comes off the tower. And so that's concerning that it would come in the highway, and I'm concerned for our employees, for friends and family in the area. The tower's currently not equipped. It's just a tower. So I don't know when some provider has to come before the county if this is in effect, and you say, no, the setbacks don't. Maybe that's when you make the issue. Just a suggestion.
Well, another thing that your ordinance will do is prevent the building of speculative towers. You can't build a tower unless you have a carrier signed up to be the first carrier on it. So for instance, if Verizon says, hey, our coverage in this area isn't too good, and we want to have a tower here, well, they contract with a tower company and say, please build us a tower here. So speculative towers are a no-no. They should never be built. And if you've got a tower without a carrier on it, that may give you a little more wiggle room to say, this is not the right place. But I mean, you know, the tower is a half a million dollar structure, and you're going to have a fight to move it, you know, once it's up.
We have two new towers with no carrier on it. We have the only fiber in the area, and so we will be asked to carry the fiber backhaul, but we have not been contacted on either tower. I suspect they are speculative, possibly because of the BEAT money that's coming to the state of New Mexico, and there's probably a fixed wireless provider that, you know, hey, if there's some towers out there, we're going to do an application. And that's fine, and competition just makes us all better. But, you know, just the location of that tower. I love the concealment part of the ordinance, that that has to be considered. Very successfully done in the Riajo area on most of their towers, not some of them. But that would have been nice there, because we get a lot of complaints, hey, PVT, what are you doing? These towers are ugly. They don't blend in to our tower.
That could be something that would be able to go in reverse, if you will, if a carrier comes in, wants to co-locate. The commission can ask, hey, can we look at some concealment on this? It's ugly. It was built before the ordinance. So that could be something that would be a little. But again, I mean, it costs the applicant money.
Bring up that you might want to include in this ordinance going forward is perhaps the requirement, and I don't know if this is legal to do, perhaps the requirement to provide some space for county emergency services equipment, to where you could increase your footprint with those emergency services, with maybe just a small addition on a tower. Just a thought.
That was the intent of this tower when we approved it in Mayhill, is to put emergency services on there. Because Matt was the one that presented the tower builds first approved. Am I remembering that correctly?
I think so.
And I also asked him at the time if that was compliant with all of the regulations.
It wasn't that time, because we didn't have this in place. But I agree that if a company does, if there's nothing on them and a company does come wanting to use them, they will have to apply for a permit at that time, and that gives, because we can assert, and we're not going to approve it unless you take the steps and pay the money to move it to where it will be in compliance. So that could incentivize moving in.
Or run businesses off from not wanting to be a part of it.
Possibly. I'm not an expert on all of this telecommunications, but I don't think that there's that many access points, and I think.
It wasn't that time because we didn't have this in place. But I agree that if, if a company does, if there's nothing on them and a company does come wanting to use them, they will have to apply for a permit at that time. And that gives, because we can assert it and we're not going to approve it unless you take the steps and pay the money to move it to where it will be in compliance. So that could incentivize moving in.
Or run businesses off from not wanting to be a part of it.
Possibly. I mean, I'm not an expert on all of this telecommunications, but I don't think that there's that many access points. And I think there's probably, because.
See, in a lot of different places you go to, they have some towers that are kind of camouflaged looking to where they don't look like a big eyesore. This particular one, I think you're talking about, it's up there by Mosher's. That stands out, the big old, like a windmill looking tower. Isn't that the one that you're?
It's a self-supporting tower. So it's not, it's not guided. It's actually between my mark of 29 and 30. It's by Lazy Day Cabinets, Cabinets, which is across there.
I've seen it up there and it is pretty much eyesore. Can you, can we have that put into the ordinance? Is that even a possibility to where you can have them, where they're not such an eyesore? Some type of a cover-up?
Well, again, you're asking for a retroactive action, so.
But in the future?
In the future, yes. It's up to the county. So the ordinance is, is written so that modifications and co-locations go to the county manager for approval because they're very common and things like that. But a new tower would come to the full commission. And in that process, if a company comes and says, hey, we want to build a 200-foot tower right in the middle of town with no stealth, and you get this app, because I'm going to come down here and I'm going to say, hey, here's what we got. And I just went through this in McKinley County in Galen. They didn't agree to change it to stealth, but they did agree to paint it. So it depends on, on the county and the carrier, the tower. But the bottom line is, that is your opportunity to say, you know, we don't want this 200-foot tower in the middle of town unless you do some stealth on it. Again, McKinley County has a beautiful clock tower. It's a, it's about a 100-foot tower, but, you know, it's a clock tower and it's actually useful so you can see the time. That's your opportunity. Going in reverse and saying, hey, we'd like to, you have a modification on this and we'd like to get some changes to it. We can ask, we can certainly ask, but I don't think you can, you can enforce that, as it were, with, you know, if AT&amp;T comes in and wants to co-locate, AT&amp;T's looking to spend, you know, $50,000 to put new antennas on this, on this tower. And then you say, hey, we would like you to do another $100,000 worth of work to, to do a new stealth thing. AT&amp;T's going to say, oh, that's not our tower. The tower's owned by someone else. So again, we can ask, and I'm certainly willing to do that, to reach out to the tower owner and say, this is an eyesore. The commission has brought this up. Are you willing to, to do some work to it? But enforcing it and saying you have to do this is a different story.
But can we get this in?
You have the ability to, where you don't care if it's a stealth tower. And that's all in the approval process for a new one. And they want to put those 50-foot 5G poles or we want it to be hidden or something. I mean, you've seen the middle of New York City and they're complaining about it. So this ordinance gives, gives the commission the ability to address all of that at the time. And if you don't agree to it, you don't agree until the applicant says, okay, we'll, we'll make it look different, we'll put stealth on it, whatever. That's in there.
If I could just add, I do think there is, there is an opportunity to address the safety issues since these towers are currently not equipped. And that's when you are speculative towers. And so, you know, once, once that provider wants to, wants to build, build their antenna, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Nice meeting you. And we'll certainly look at that tower when, and if it comes up. Again, it's hard to go back, but we can, we can bring up those issues with the setback.
No, this is, this is what I questioned, what I wanted before we put that tower.
One of the reasons where we came to Otero and we work with other, I'll never work for Burnalee County or Santa Fe because they have the staff. They've got the engineers, they've got the people. So we come to the counties that haven't got an ordinance or the staff to deal with these things. But once the ordinance is passed, we're working for you. And these issues will be very obvious to you at that point. Able to, to make decisions based on some sound advice.
Anything else?
I'm going to do.
Ready to vote?
So Dean, would, adding that clause that was asked about, make in provision for so much space to be left for county, state, or emergency services?
We, we can do that. I will say, I've not had much luck with that. I've done this before where we've had this same request. And the problem is, is the, the tower owner rents space on that tower, right? So if you approve them to build a tower, and you say, but we're only going to approve it if you give us, you know, a space at the top for our emergency radios. Well, that's, you know, a $50,000 ask of that, of that tower owner who can't lease that space to someone else. I've seen it happen. It's not impossible. I saw the McKinley ones, but the, the tower was on county property. The county was leasing it to the tower owner, right? It's at a fire station. They were leasing it to the, the county was leasing it to the tower owner. And then they said, as part of the lease, you know, we'll, we'll give you, you know, a little bit off the lease, but we want to put our equipment at the top. Pretty tough, tough thing to incorporate. And I've been asked this question before. I was asked that, the same thing in Valencia County. And we couldn't make it happen there because, again, it came down to the, the tower owners are charging space on those towers and they don't want to give it away. I asked for, for one free internet account from a company, much like Mitch's company, that's selling internet because the tower was 50 feet from a woman's house.
Time to do it. We need to include it in the vote. So that's what I'm saying. I mean, how, you know, how much percentage of the available space if, would it actually take up? Are we talking 10%, 5%?
You know, I don't know. You might look at it more as structural capacity. And, and it depends on the equipment and how much goes up there. A tower can usually, a normal tower can support four co-locators, right? And then that gets it up to 100% capacity. So, you know, you, you may be saying, if it's, if it's just our one thing, that's, that's not very much. It's a 10-pound radio. But that may take the space for an entire co-locator where they can only put three on it now. So, so each, each, and each situation is different, of course. And we can look to add something to it. Possibly if you, if you pass it today, I'm certainly willing to rewrite anything and we can look at amending it at the next meeting or we can do it with a resolution, however, however you want to do it. I, I will say, I haven't had much luck with that, this.
Permitting process there, approval. Could we negotiate that at that time?
Absolutely. And again, if, if you own the property, that gives you rental income for, for that, that tower. But if it's your property, it's much, much easier than given the, the lease to, to a tower company. Little harder, but you still have the ability to, to negotiate at that point.
As written right now, we have that ability.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. But again, I want to caution that if a tower comes, a tower company comes in and they've complied with the ordinance and everything else, and the, and the commission says, we're not going to approve it unless you give us $50,000 a year in tower space. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go into the legal area of that. Again, I defer to Mr. Nichols, but that sounds a little sticky to me.
Some of my experience, and since I've been a commissioner, RB, is we've added equipment to towers, moved equipment from towers, people have joined us, we've added to where they do Las Cruces, Santa Teresa. So we've got so many deals, I don't know how you could consider if you ask for one little space because they, Matt and them move stuff around so much, it would be kind of a tricky deal.
I will also say that the ordinance doesn't apply to the county. So if you want to put a tower on top of a fire station and put a, put a radio up there, you don't have to do all of this, obviously. You're the, you're the jurisdiction. So the county is exempted from, you know, if you want to put a 50-foot tower somewhere and put a radio on it, you're good to go. Of course, that's not, it's not a cheap proposition either.
Yeah.
So it, it sounds better to, to just look at it case by case and negotiate based on the specifics of that rather than have a blanket clause that applies to all that, you know, every tower has to.
Think if every location of the tower would be a different scenario, how it comes up too. So that would probably be a good wording to have in there.
And when, honestly, I mean, you brought up the BEAT thing. We are getting a lot of new towers with BEAT, the BEAT funding. That's, that's, the state is paying these, these tower companies 75% of the cost to build, build the towers. So it's your tax dollars on that. But we are seeing a lot of new towers. But honestly, this might come up once a year, if you're lucky. You might, you'll, you'll get a new, new tower, one to be built, you know? And, I mean, you, you did mention this, this one that's the Mayhill Tower, but, I mean, how many have you had since then or before then?
Been a while. It seems like we put, didn't they put one up? Somebody put one up down for the, that would cover the Mesa area, Chaparral, and all of that for the.
I don't recall the location.
It's been two, three years ago, but it was, they did one down there. And that's, like I say, that's a whole different beast because it covers, I think, Las Cruces Sheriff's Department is off of it, the whole nine yards, you know? So several, several people are on that.
Is the ordinance going to, would it cover anything that is Starlink technology or something similar? Or is, would that be different? Excuse my ignorance on, I don't know at all.
Yeah, so, so it does cover, I had, over in Luna County, I had GoGo Wireless, which was a, they're a company that shoots, shoots up the airplanes as they're flying over. So it applied to them. Any commercial carrier that wants to put something on a tower. I don't believe Starlink, I've not had an application where Starlink puts anything on a tower. But I have had internet providers like Mr. Hibbert's company where they, they put a full row of antennas around that are beaming internet with some of this new technology. It's pretty impressive too. You can get one gig speed over these, these things, but.
Yeah, and I know they are, all communications are down except for Starlink-based communication, so.
Yeah. My, well, I would, would point out that the ordinance also covers COWs, Cell on Wheels, C-O-W. And you'll see these, we get them a lot up in Moora County with the fires up there and they burn down the cell towers. The companies will bring in these temporary COW. And that's, so that, so that's included in there. And my, my, my family's in Florida, Tampa, and they just barely got by last night.
I'm glad they made it through. I was just in Tampa and it's right on the water, where you would go.
Yeah, they, they couldn't get out. There was so much traffic. I'm sorry, I'm off topic.
That is. All right, I think we're, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I make a motion to approve ordinance 24-3 regulating the sitting and permitting of wireless telecommunications facilities. So call in favor. Okay, call in favor?
Aye.
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 I saw Sheriff Black, but I don't know where he went. There he is. We skipped over you, so you can go.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry for being late. We had an issue we had to deal with by County Sheriff's Office. Responded to 2,856 calls for service, generated 303, and we did serve one warrant. We had 145 traffic citations, served 358 subpoenas for the courts. The calls responded to in Tulie, we jumped back up to 121 this month. So we did have a, a good visit with Chief Candelaria on Saturday at the Almogordo Night Out. And we, we talked about his manning, his situation and stuff. And there's a lot in progress for them. I look forward to the things happening that they've got in progress. I think they'll probably have, hopefully, six guys on the street before too long, so.
That would be first in a long time.
It'll be good if they can get it all to work out. In narcotics, we had four search warrants, three arrests, one agency assist, generated 33 case reports, had two checkpoint cases. We had three vehicles that were seized, one firearm that was seized, one fugitive that was apprehended. We did have one jail possession case. We seized 77.5 grams of meth, 5.4 grams of heroin, and we haven't seen 9.3 grams of cocaine, half a gram of fentanyl powder. This is the second month in a row we've had fentanyl powder. That's quite concerning. And then we had 16,495 fentanyl pills seized, total of $247,000 worth of illegal narcotics seized. In our special events, on September 18th, we had a career day at Yucca Heights Elementary. 19th through the 21st, we were very busy with the Otero County Fair. We had, we had the, the whole gang out there for that one. Also on the 21st, we did the escort for the military vets. We escorted them from the southern border line, the state line, to the reception at the fairgrounds.
That was awesome.
That was a pretty cool deal. The 21st, that was, was very fruitful for us. That will help with our manning situation. And then on September 28th, we were, were part of that United Autism Event here in Almogordo. With our training, again, we just, we're trying to get caught up or stay caught up getting all this legislative mandated stuff, in which the update, with updating all policies and procedures. Again, this is going to help us not only be in compliance with best practices and standards, but it's going to help us in the near future for our accreditation process that we're going to go through with the state. We're also about halfway done with the red dot class. Every deputy has to receive so many hours of training on the use of a red dot prior to having one installed on their hands and, so we're getting close to being done with that. In our manning, I did have another deputy resign this month. He just basically decided that law enforcement was not the career for him anymore. So he took a job up in the Farmington area and moved his family up there. I still have the three employees at the academy at Hobbs. Reports we're getting is they're doing very well over there. Something new for this academy, I'm going to go over on the 23rd. I've never had an academy do this. That's the midpoint for the, the academy. They're going to hold a meeting to where, I don't know, I kind of look at it kind of like a parent-teacher conference. We're going to go over there and we're going to get to review their academic grades, their portfolio, or their file and stuff, and just see where they're at and make sure that they are meeting all the standards and everything that they need to. Plus, we're going to sit down and have lunch with them and just kind of pick their brain on, on how things are going. All three of them, the reports I'm getting from them, they just, they love it over there. It's, they feel they're getting more of an academic education and they, they really love it. I do have four deputies that are currently in the FDO program. These are the ones that have graduated the last academy or hired as lateral transfers, or he's coming to us from Carlsbad. We do have six potential recruits in the background phase. Last month I reported we have five positions to be filled. This month, we have three open positions to be filled. And we will be having a physical fitness assessment on the 19th in hopes of getting these, these positions filled. On our vehicles, I think last month I reported we got two new Tahos and got them in rotation. Well, yesterday I got two more Tahos out, so they're in the process of right now. They got a couple of things they need to do with the CAD computers and stuff in the vehicles, and then we'll get those, those two brand new ones in rotation. I still haven't heard anything on the $160,000 that we got in the New Mexico Grove money, but hopefully that will come through soon and we'll get those ACO trucks and stuff purchased. That's it. I will stand for any questions.
Don't hold busy.
Got a couple. Dave, I've been meeting with Elizabeth down in Chaparral. She sent me a new list of the addresses on the, the gang-related stuff. I just forwarded you those text-wise, so you should have those addresses. I asked, last week I asked Shannon Reynolds, the commissioner, for the letter, support letter that we talked about. He was going home on some type of emergency. I haven't received anything. I did forward him another message this morning asking about that letter, so that's, I'm still trying to get that, so.
Okay, and I've, I've worked on a few others from other folks too, to try to get support letters also.
Okay.
And we'll tell you the photos that we had on the, the first round of gang stuff. I did, this is new to us, we haven't seen this stuff. So I did forward all this stuff to that Mark Gayton for what, what it relates to, you know, whether it's, is it going to be a local gang? Is it somebody else coming in or something? So we're waiting on him to give us a response on those photographs, so.
She sent me three addresses and they're all on Luna Street. So I don't know, that's, that's one, but like I say, she, you'll see them whenever it come through, but they're all right there together, so.
Is it just addresses or do they have any photos?
No, they're just addresses.
Okay, I'll send deputies by like I did here and just have them take photos of what it's all about.
Thank you.
You betcha.
I've been watching political ads, which are always truthful, right? By fifty percent. I don't see that reflected in your, your monthly reports.
No.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I would say that's, that's a false statement.
Okay.
Because we are, we're-
Which is really bad.
Yes. That stuff's really bad. One spill of that and it, it could wipe out a bunch of people.
And your reports are just, the Sheriff's Office reports don't include what they find in the city?
Um, no, it, it's going to include city stuff also.
Okay.
We do have a member from the city now in our narcotics division, so they're for a while.
Okay, good.
But we have people counting.
I guess, I mean, I understand the pills, but what do they do with the powder? What is the purpose of the powder?
Well, they, they try to press it, try to press it into pills.
Oh, okay.
It's just another process they don't have to pay for. See, how can I put this? And we got an investigation going on right now that we think we have located a pill press. It's about all I'll say right now, but there's, yeah, that, that's what they're doing. They bring it in powder form and they press it into pills. And they press it into a pill to make it look like whatever they want.
Yeah.
Because you may think you'd be getting one pill and, and you're getting a fentanyl pill. It's, it's pretty dangerous.
They're killing us without firing a shot.
Yep. Well, and the stats we have now, one in six pills is a lethal overdose.
Wow.
Yep, it's pretty scary.
They're getting worse. Yep, and I don't know what we got to do to, I know State Police did two blitzes on them.
They did two what?
Two blitzes.
Okay.
For just, I think they did two days back-to-back and stopped them all, and they made the threat that they wouldn't come through our town, and I know State Police said, okay.
Yeah.
But absolutely not the way to, to haul cars. And if, if something is going to happen, we've had one go through the Tulie administration right there at the front, rolled over. We've had, we constantly have them, I don't know what it is about my post seventy-nine, but that seems to be where they wreck the most. We've had some accidents between the checkpoint and Nord Grande. I mean, we've got to, we need to get a handle on these guys.
Do you have any idea, did you have a contact at State Police you were talking with or?
Matt.
Matt?
Um.
You want to eliminate the river worms? Is that what you?
Yes. Yeah, it's, it's pretty bad.
Cool. I will visit with Matt to see what's going on now.
Hey, anything else?
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Be safe out there.
I'll be back in a little bit.
Matt's not here, is he?
He's at the Wild, Wildland Fire Summit this week.
Okay, I didn't think he, I didn't, I didn't see him.
I was going to ask him if he could give us reports every month on volunteer recruitment and how that's going.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll ask, I'll ask him to add that.
Okay. And I also didn't see any funding go out for any of the fire departments for volunteer recruitment on the accounts payable bills. Do we know if we started any volunteer recruitment yet? Or are we just going to wait a year from now and then try to do it?
I don't know. If, if they don't put the requisition in, we don't pay it, so I don't have control over that. And are we looking for the individual fire departments or OES?
I, so, last commission meeting, we found eighty thousand dollars of rollover money in Matt's budget.
Okay.
And so I asked him to give five hundred dollars per department for volunteer recruitment, and I wanted to see how that was working for the first thirty days.
I'll follow up for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Come on, Grandpa.
Yeah, fourth time in a row, hopefully. Good morning, Commissioners, Tom Porter, Otero County Road Department.
I love my grandbabies, but I don't know if I can do three.
I got six.
This is number four. So for the month of September, we finished up our chip seal for 2024. The only thing lacking on it right now is the striping, and the strippers should be here next week. Cleared and hauled, and cleaned culverts on Mountain Meadows, Beecher, Waterfall, Lodge Spring, and installed the new cattle guard on F double oh four for one of the ranchers down there. Hauled pit run throughout the county, real busy doing reconstruct after all the rains we've had. Patching again on Mountain Meadows, Pawhuska, La Brecita, Agua Chiquit, Hay, Robin Hood subdivision, North Florida and La Luz. Mowing throughout the county, we're working on the north end right now, working our way back south again. It's been a tough year. One of my vegetation guys got activated National Guard, so he's been up in Riedo, so the whole summer, so I've been kind of having to float them between my road guys when we had a chance to do most of our mowing. And other than that, like I said, prepping for road striping.
I forwarded you an email a couple of weeks ago about Tularosa, I think it was Bookout Road for the mowing.
And they did, I'm pretty sure they were hitting North Bookout. I know they hit Sun Valley and the area on Riada, and they're working on Pecos right now, Pecos and Tulie Gate.
Is that patching?
No, mowing.
Mowing. Do we, do we do any roads in Tulie?
Not in Tulie, no.
What about that North Bookout and then Railroad that goes? Is that county road?
Railroad, where it is completely blown out, B Village.
Oh. Because I drove it the other day and it's part of Old City.
Say that again, it's completely?
Railroad from Aguirre to Tulie Gate Road is Village, and past Tulie Gate Road, almost to Dirt Road, that's Village.
Oh, I didn't know the dirt part went, that was Tulie, okay.
No, Dirt Road is ours.
The, I didn't know the dirt portion of Railroad was ours.
Yeah, that's right about, there's a sign there that says end of county maintenance, beginning of county maintenance.
How about Gardner Road?
Gardner, I thought Juno was down there just a little while ago, wasn't he?
I, I didn't see you though.
Okay. I thought he was down there like three or four weeks ago.
It's pretty bad.
Okay, I'll let him know.
You know, the other day when I called you about that big old lamb that fell on the road, and thank you for, you guys getting up there and getting that-
Actually, the residents got up there before we did.
I know, they were, they had their chainsaw, we were, you know, they were blocked in. But when there's a road that's really leaning, that'll, I mean, I mean, a tree that's really leaning looks like it's fixing to fall in the road, I know it's not our property. Is there anything we can do about that?
What, is the scenario where, where is it at?
James Canyon.
Well, we have a lot of them up in the canyon, and I can think of one right now in particular. Tree's probably twenty-inch in diameter at the base, and it is hanging over, I want to say it's hangs, it may be car, but it, we ever get a good wet year, it's coming down across the road and probably taking out somebody's house, but flip side of it, it's on private property.
Except for the part that's hanging over. Cut that part.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, it, it's, it's something we can possibly work with the property owners and, and see where we can get, but it's not, it's, it's, it's case by case.
Yeah, no, we can't make them do it, it's just kind of dangerous, because I mean, if it comes over and you're driving by, it's not going to be a good day.
Well, and again, in a case like this pine that I'm thinking, it's the same one you're talking of, we'd actually have to hire an arborist to go, and we're not geared up for dropping something like that in and around power lines and houses.
And that has both.
Exactly.
So we just have to talk sweet.
Canyon, panel.
I don't remember.
Yeah, I know, it's not cheap.
If it, if it's a public safety issue and it's on private property, can the county send the homeowner a letter and see if they'll take care of it first? Will they, will they be liable if they fall on a school bus?
They could be.
I mean, we, could we approach it that way?
Yeah.
First?
Because that morning when I left, it was still dark because I was headed to Roswell, I think, for a meeting, and I got through just as they'd made a big enough path. I got my car through it, but then five minutes up the road, the school bus was, I met it, and I thought, I don't know if he's going to make it through there or not.
And see, that's one of the things, you know, phone calls like that one, you know, if John Q. calls us, a lot of these roads, we don't know, you know, that something's wrong.
Right.
You know, and we can't always get there immediately, but in a case like that, we had to, we have no choice.
Well, thank you for getting up there quick.
There, there's some different ways we can look at it, though. And, you know, the, the thing that gets them away is cost, and so if it's, if it's going to be the property owner's responsibility, if we can find some way to offset that cost, whether it's bringing in maybe a third-party charity organization that can take it and, and distribute it for firewood or something, so we, we can try and get creative and look at all that stuff.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Good luck with the grandbaby.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Trent Parker, project manager.
Morning.
Let's start up the, the new road shop building. We are, it should, are going to be issuing an PEO for the company to come in and do the framing and sheet rock for the offices on the facilities end. This week, we completed the installation of the new septic system for the restrooms in there, so it's kind of moving along good. Hoping by first of the year, Eric will be able to be operating out of there.
The Hy rolls Fire Department expansion this, this month, we got the building all erected up and complete. The doors, overhead doors were installed this week. The electrical services to be installed next, starting next week. And then I'm waiting on the pricing for the bay heaters, but as soon as I get that back, I'll be able to get to moving on that. So we're hoping to have that finished by the end of the month. The plumbers are up there right now, they're tying in plumbing to the new tank, to the hydrant and everything. We've got the pump house pad done. I'm working on pricing right now for the actual pump house itself, so we're trying to beat any cold weather involved with that to get it completed. There's been some valves, of course, materials is a big thing these days of leak times on it, so there's some valves we're still waiting on that we expected already but haven't received, so it's kind of been a little bit prolonged, but. The James Canyon, same thing, we're building, putting up two pump buildings for those, for Upper Cox and for over at Cloud Country West. The plumbing's complete over at Cloud Country, or at Upper Cox. Cloud Country, they're currently working on that, we're hoping to have that about eighty percent done this week. The, but they did, their, the well over at Upper Cox Canyon was, had some minor issues. We got the well company up there, got that fixed this morning. They're up there turning everything on and testing to make sure we don't have any leaks or any issues, so. Roof replacement, we're still in design and, and trying to get DFA approval on, on all of the aspects of the scope of work. The demo projects, I've been working with Jacob on that. Last month, you guys approved two resolutions. We had, received the pricing back on those. We've done the asbestos inspections on them, both of them were clear of any hazardous material, so the prices were pleasantly lower, so you guys have two more on the consent agenda today. Once that's approved, we'll go ahead and get moving on those as well. And they're, they're scheduled to come down, so.
Good.
Shooting range, we're working on a, a main service power upgrade for them. They've had some issues when too many things were running at once, but it was only a one hundred amp service for the whole place, so we're upgrading it to a two hundred amp. We have a power outage scheduled for next Thursday for them to come in and do that swap out. And that's about all I have. Good? Question? Bye.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nina Sisler, Correctional Services Director. Today's total population is a hundred and sixty-six. September was, the average daily population was one seventy-nine. In-house population today, we have a hundred and thirty-seven total, a hundred and eighteen males, nineteen females. At Otero Prison, we have eight. Treatment and furlough programs, we have eight. Out of county courts, we have four, two in Lincoln and then one at the Corrigan. I have six juveniles. I went from eight and now it's increasing and we're expecting another one, so. And also with lesser charges and get these other ones housed. And I have four at Donana, one in Lee County, and one in Burnalia, so. Video courts in-house, we have thirty-eight municipal courts, a hundred and eleven magistrate. District court, we had a hundred and twenty-four. Out of county courts, we had six. In-person, we had district court six, and magistrate county, and one resigned for personal issues. My part-time positions are filled, I'm hopeful one of those part-timers will want to go full-time. So as far as training, in the month of September, we did suicide prevention training and CPR on first day with the help of Josh and John Barney. We did have one contraband in the booking area of fentanyl. I do have a project manager for a body scanner that which should be getting ready to be installed hopefully sometime at the end of this month or beginning of November, I'm hoping.
You just like getting on the airplane.
Yeah, pretty much. Department of Corrections, we did transport eleven males to the Central New Mexico Correction Facility in Los Lunas. We had two females that were transported to Women's Corrections Facility in Gratz, and we transported, transported two to Darren's Place, which is a treatment facility, one for men's recovery, and we did take two to Macia Valley for mental health stabilization and they're already back and returned to the facility. That's it.
And how did you, how many vacancies do you have? Did I miss that?
Twelve, one of nine to twelve.
Okay.
So hopefully.
You're going the other way.
I know, I was getting better, but.
Is, you still have that identity program going?
No.
That's not going anymore?
No.
I still see the advertisement on TV, I didn't know if we were still.
Yeah, I know, but Reno County, that's where I lost one staff too, because there's ten thousand dollar sign-off bonus. So, I mean, some of the correction, and they booked their hourly wages to like twenty-two ninety-five or something like that. I did see there, because I pulled up their website, I was like, she's going to Burnalia County. And she is.
A little tough, a little tough to compete with that.
Ten thousand and twenty-two ninety-five, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Caleb Finch, here representing the Forest Service for the Sacramento Ranger District.
Good morning.
Rodney Mays was not able to make it and asked me if I could sit in, so the focus of information for this month is going to be focused on projects on the Sacramento Ranger District that are tied to fire and fuels. And so as we closed out our fiscal year, which ended September thirtieth, in the fuels department, we were able to accomplish three thousand one hundred acres of prescribed fire, one hundred and thirty-five acres of mastication, which is focused mainly around the community of Sixteen Springs, which is also partnering with the New Mexico State Forestry and the Forest and Watershed, Forest and Watershed Restoration Act. That's a ongoing project that I'll mention here shortly. Moving into fiscal year twenty-five, which began on October first, we currently have been awarded two point two million dollars, I think I spoke about this maybe briefly back in early summer, which has been awarded to the National Forest Foundation. It's a partnership between the Forest Service and that foundation, which is funding six different projects on the Sacramento- which is funding six different projects on the Sacramento Ranger District. Of that money, about four hundred thousand dollars will fund a position that'll be focused in Cloudcroft or Alamo Gordo, tied to all these projects on the Sacramento Ranger District to continue the hazardous fuels reduction and surveys in effort of these projects. Those projects include, uh, as number one priority is what's called the Cloudcroft Rui Maintenance. It's an ongoing project that's making progress through the NEPA process, which is, uh, bound by law, which we have to follow. But it's two thousand nine hundred and sixty-three acres, which is pretty much about a mile perimeter project around the village of Cloudcroft. Back in the early two thousands, I would say all of that country was thin and, and treated. And so what we need to do is go back in there and re-treat that again. And so a lot of, uh, a lot of scouting's taken place over the last six months. That field break is still in place and looking pretty good, even though it doesn't appear to be that way from the highway. So this project will fund surveys, or that agreement will fund surveys for this project and then, uh, help us get towards the final decision where we can begin to implement. I would say at this time, implementation could be as early as August or September of next year. It's just bound by policies and laws and timelines associated with the NEPA process. But I'm, I'm pleased to say that we are making progress on that. Additionally, the second project is the Sixteen Springs Mastication. So that agreement will fund a hundred and thirty-five acres of mastication to the tune of about two hundred thousand dollars in, in and around the community of Sixteen Springs. So all of our projects are pretty much tied to the communities on the bill, around the communities up on the Sacramento Ranger District. Additionally, outside of that agreement, we have planned six thousand acres of prescribed fire. It's what, what we call the shelf stock. That means those are projects ready for implementation. I'm not sure if we'll get all of that complete in this fiscal year, but at least we have stock where we can achieve to, or work towards achieving those acres. Additionally, we continue to work with the New Mexico State Forestry, uh, through this Fire, Forest and Watershed and the Cabinet and Field Office. Additionally, in Sixteen Springs, this agreement will fund, uh, the improvement, timber stand improvement of about one thousand two hundred acres of timber on the east side of Sixteen Springs. Moving forward still, in a new project that's come on online, we anticipate moving through the NEPA process, uh, in January. All the surveys are complete and this is called the Denny Project. It's located around the community of Weed, Camp Tall Pines, right along Denny Hill and Highway twenty-four. Four thousand eight hundred and twenty acres. We will have a community meeting, uh, in the community of Weed on October twenty-ninth. That will conclude all of our community meetings for the last twelve months, which we've had community meetings in Sixteen Springs, Village of Cloudcroft, and then the community of Weed. All of those have been, uh, very well representative and positive feedback regarding these projects. That project is more of a habitat restoration, incorporating the hazardous fuels reduction around some of the private property along Highway twenty-four. And then closing out for the final project is the SSRP, the Southern Sacramento Restoration Project. The NEPA process is coming closer to the end. It's been a long, ongoing process. But it looks to be anticipated of signature, maybe sometime in February. That's about a hundred, a hundred and eight thousand acres across the Sacramento Ranger District on the southern end. Meetings are currently being taken place on what implementation looks like and what that plan will be moving forward. The New Mexico State Forestry looking for funding for these various projects, as well as the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish to fund implementation efforts on these projects. As a side note, we have nine, uh, live cameras up on the forest. Four of those are on the Sacramento Ranger District in which wildfires, but be able to look at those cameras. We're still working some of, through some of the details, but those will come online here prior to next summer. Uh, in closing, the Cloudcroft Reader sponsored the Fire Forum Risk Meeting up in Cloudcroft on nine twenty-five. There were a hundred and seventy participants, several speakers, uh, great attendance, great feedback. And it's the importance of the private homeowners to continue to do their part and their effort on cleaning up their private property if they live in the mountain areas. Take those corrective actions when a wildfire is threatening those homes to be able to protect those homes. And if homeowners can continue to do that, those firefighters can be successful. Um, and I'm open for any questions and be able to take notes and pass this back on to Ronnie.
The Forest Service funds for a lot more productive things than to acre in a acre of basically noxious weeds that are not really good for anything. That's just, I'm not put, put, public, I'll put it in the public comments too, but I wanted Ronnie to know I am not loving this at all.
Understand.
I have questions about that too.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll ask mine then.
So for one, are there any cattle on this designated area already? That shows where this enclosure is gonna be?
I will ask. I will find out.
Because I, I, I would looked into this and it shows that, um, you know, not only does the drought affect it, but it says the cattle affects it too. So I'm wondering if that's one of the targets is going after our ranchers if that's on a ranch. And then, um, when looking into this plant, um, it seems to grow, and since then, it grows on the side of highways. It grows random everywhere, especially in Arizona and here. So have we done an update to see if this is actually still an endangered plant? And are we doing this enclosure with, without any knowledge of where it is right now? Since it's on your website saying that it grows everywhere. And, um, also, I, I spoke with a termed-out county commissioner in Arizona. I just Googled where and, and found somebody that I knew. And, um, they don't have this going on in Arizona where these enclosures are and all that kind of stuff. And he says that they had a little more oversight and they'd be able to stop this. So what is the difference between us being able to stop it?
Okay, very good, very good questions. I will pass this on to Ronnie.
I have one more on that same issue. On your enclosure, are you gonna be fencing off any water?
I will find out.
Is that a whole nother episode right there?
And then going back to the, the Wild Left meeting, I wasn't able to go to that fire meeting in Cloudcroft. Did you go?
Uh-uh.
Power line from Alamo Gordo to Cloudcroft? And the stop of the, the trees falling on the power line, stopping at that, where we stand on being able to clean that up right now? And if we're asking our homeowners to clean up their properties to prevent, then why can't we prevent as well?
Well, we are. As, in the Forest Service, there's various laws and policies we have to follow, various restrictions that are out of our, out of our control or mandated by federal laws and policies. What our job is to navigate through those federal laws and policies to find where we can treat those areas. And then where we, where can we treat those areas that are restricted by those policies and laws? And so that's what we're doing right now. In the capacity of, in the capacity of what we can do in the Forest Service, we're over a half-million acre district. And so we have to prioritize where can we treat closest to those homeowners, those values at risk. But we have to get as close as we can to those values at risk. But we also, as we do our part, we also need to make sure that these homeowners know that it's important that they can do their part as well. Because ultimately, when a fire comes through, those firefighters are gonna need every, um, bit of, of requirements. And we just ask the homeowners to continue to do their part.
Right. So as my understanding, that we did everything required to actually turn the can and start the project work to be able to, to identify and remove these trees within a hundred-foot radius of, of falling on these power lines. And the plug got pulled. And I don't know why the plug got pulled and why it stopped, but the funding is there, the pro-
Information passed back on to you guys.
Some reason I thought that distance was a hundred and fifty feet.
I think it was, was it a hundred feet on each side? Or I think it was a hundred feet on each side of the power line. And only trees at risk of falling. It's not the lower trees or anything, just, because we know that's how the fires start, is when a tree falls on the power line. And we know if the fire starts in that canyon, Cloudcroft is gone. So I don't know why we wait, why we hold things.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda items. Um, number two, request approval of accounts payable, bills, list BL ten, eleven, eleven A, eleven B, twelve, and thirteen. Number three, request approval of property liens for reimbursement of unclaimed dis- disposition services for October twenty twenty-four. Number four, request approval of healthcare assistance claims and disposition claims for October twenty twenty-four. Request approval, um, number five, request approval of September eleventh, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes. Number six, request approval of resolution. Number ten dash ten dash twenty-four slash one thirteen dash twelve, an agreement between Otero County and the New Mexico Department of Transportation for the transportation project funds in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. Number seven, request approval of resolution number ten dash ten dash twenty-four slash one thirteen dash thirteen. Approval of resolution number ten dash ten dash twenty-four slash one thirteen dash fourteen. Ten Desert Willow, Alamo Gordo, New Mexico, dilapidated property in accordance with ordinance number twenty-two dash zero two. Number nine, request approval of resolution number ten dash ten dash twenty-four slash one justice board. Number eleven, request approval to submit volunteer fire assistance grants to New Mexico State Forestry. Number twelve, next, Sheriff's Office and Road Shop. Number thirteen, oh, that was it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now moving on to number thirteen. Um, Citizens Communication, Sheila Coke, Beth Lucero, and Dean Hackett.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dean couldn't make it today. He's out. He's a fireman.
Oh.
So I just wanted to come and talk to you a little bit about fair. And, um, with sixty-one thousand plus or minus five percent for those four days. So we were busy. In the building, we had thirty-nine vendors, with twenty-six of those vendors being nonprofit. One thing we hear a lot since Frontier Village has been torn down is there's no nonprofits. There's no, over half of our vendors are nonprofits. It just looks different now, um, but we still serve nonprofits at fair and throughout the whole year. Junior Livestock, they had a total of seventy-nine exhibitors, um, two hundred and three entries, sixty animals sold, and we had a record sell of four hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred and thirty-seven. Add-ons were twenty-five thousand eight hundred, booster pots was four thousand two hundred and thirty-eight, for a grand total of, um, four hundred fifty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-five.
That's amazing. Yeah, it's a good sale.
It, it's better than a lot of other sales in the state, you know, for, for the size of, um, for how many exhibitors there are. It's awesome. They do a good job. We had a record rodeo this year. We, uh, got a new stock provider. And, um, it, that seemed to go over really well. We've been, now we're working on the bull. We're getting him built and covered this week. And we're gonna be painting him actually pink for Cancer Awareness Month. We lost a, a board member this summer, um, and to, to cancer. And so we're, we wanna do the cancer awareness. It's gonna, at, at the, um, at the burning of the bull. We're gonna be starting on the Mason's Project, the concession stand. They're gonna start taking all the stuff out, um, I think next week. And speaking of trees, when you guys were talking about trees, you know the big, um, pines that are behind the, um, rodeo stands?
Yeah.
Well, they're dying and sipses and there's no saving them. So we did get an estimate to take those down because they're by the power lines. And it's gonna be ten to twelve thousand dollars to take those down. So we'll probably put in for that, for community services money. So that's, will be coming up, because.
They're a mess too.
They are a mess. We have to pick up all that every year.
I have pine trees all over my house and they're a mess.
Yes, yes, for sure. So, um, but yeah, we, we had a good fair there. Um, we only had one major incident and that was the first day when this, um, the footage, you know, we were able to get the footage of that and give it to the sheriff's department. But what we did find out about our new security and camera system, we were told that we would have thirty days before the video would drop off. And, um, when it's really busy, since they're motion activated, we have about three days. So if something happens at fair that the sheriff's department needs, we have to get in there and get it because it'll drop off. So, but we did let Dave know that, so.
Is, is that a design flaw? Or is that a deal that you can program it to get more days out of, or is that?
Maybe ask Dave.
He's like, what?
He's like, what? You're gonna put me on the spot?
You're talking about the fair. I don't know what you're talking about.
You know, um, our security system, initially they hoped is the video would stay up thirty days. But since it's motion activated during fair, we found out we had actually three days before it drops off. So, and he's asking if that's a design flaw. I don't think it's a design flaw, but I don't know how to fix it where you would have.
The difference is we have like more, like more activity. And that means it's recording more, so it's, uh, from what, from what, yeah, from that because that, if there's more motion, then it's, uh, it reduces the date.
Well, Abe, what I, what I'm asking is will it store, that's the problem. It won't store it for the thirty days like it's supposed to. Is that set up? Is that in the setup part of it to where you can make it, store for thirty days instead of just three days?
I, I feel like they under-engineered it. Like they didn't think about the amount of people that are at this event center. And so when you have an event, um, you're not gonna get that thirty days because.
Oh, there's too much.
There's too much going on to, and it takes all the storage.
It's like, it needs more space.
We can get what's happening, so we can get, uh, voting.
Cause bringing up the bulls coming up and it'll be the same thing.
It'll get the same thing.
Be as much as a fair, but it'll be a lot.
My little five hundred dollar camera system. I'm just saying, get a hold of it for thirty days and it, and it, and it does non-stop recording. You know, so even in the middle of the night, so I have the recording of it thirty days. And I can go in and say at this time right here, I can pull it and retrieve it and save it.
But do you ever have sixty-one thousand people at the wrecking yard?
It's, it'll capture, um, movement in a different area, but I can go back to that thirty days of non-stop anytime I want to. And it was only five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
I, I don't know how many, if, do you know how many cameras? There's probably, I don't know, twenty-one. There's twenty-one, twenty-one cameras.
And they all feed into that main feed?
Mm-hmm. I have twelve and I pay for three of my busiest cameras for extra space. And it's, yeah, I'm just saying. All this fancy money spending isn't always better.
Right, for sure.
So one, one other question I'd have for you. Sheila, on the, not on the fair, your water deal out by the RV dump and stuff, did you get that? You were, you were talking about all the people coming in, filling up water tanks. Did you get that regulated to where?
So that project is complete and we got it up and running, um, where they can do their credit card.
Oh, and they can give how much water they want?
And so it's, it's working out, you know, as long as that little machine works, it's, it's working out. So, um, we do, the biggest issue we have at fair is I think those water lines are so old and maybe they're collegiate up because the water pressure goes way down and there's a lot of people. And so it's hard to keep the toilets not being backed up. You know, and, and there's leaks, um, underground, um, north of the buildings. There's two wet spots that have been there for a while. I, uh, reminded Eric at Buildings and Grounds, um, at the beginning of the week. And he said that, or if it's just these lines are really old.
Probably both.
I bet, if, if you really think about how much water is being used out there during fairtime, it'll probably blow your mind away.
Washing the toilets, it's a lot.
Cause they're watering in the arena over there.
That's the bathrooms. We have a pressure tank to regulate and to get us some more pressure. And that seems to help, but it, it's, um, it is a problem and that I think eventually is gonna have to be addressed. Because it is an event center and, you know, um, we helped with the fire when the command center moved in over the summer. And we learned, um, you know, just really, it helped us point out things that we need to improve on that facility, especially if it's going to be an emergency evacuation center. So, but Ms. Beth and I are going to a conference for fair and exhibits in Phoenix. And we're actually going on a field trip. actually going on a field trip to an event center that is also an emergency evacuation center, so we can see how that's kinda set up and what they do and what works for them. So, I'm excited about that, to get that information and bring it back, so.
We need to get you included on those meetings.
Okay.
For that, the new plan, emergency plan.
Sounds good.
Thank you for the fair, I have no complaints, it was fantastic.
We always have a handful, and we have to, I have to remind myself when I get worked up, when I hear complaints, is, okay, but there are sixty thousand people there, and this is a handful of people, you just, you can't please everybody.
But I went to commend you guys, I mean, you are a very small machine, and you can see how tired you are, and, I mean, but it's non-stop, and it's consistent, and you guys do great, and I look forward to the Burning Bull.
Thank you.
And I'm glad that, I'm glad this Burning Bull event supports next year's fair.
Yes, it does.
Good, it's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cherry Moore and Michael Gutierrez.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Now I have more time, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It depends.
First of all, I wanna say thank you to the manager, the road manager, really appreciate it. I also, they're doing a great job with the bar ditches on the west side, so...
I went out yesterday with Mr. Porter and looked at that. The biggest problem that, two problems, is the private property comes so close to the road, so who's gonna buy all that private property from the deal to get easement going before you can drop it into the ditches on the other side? So, your bar ditch is probably gonna be eight to ten feet deep to get that water to get out. So, then, now you bring in another scenario, you're gonna have to put guardrails up. So, there, it's a very, very high-dollar, expensive deal. Does, the Laloos watershed is wanting this, do they have that kinda money to participate in this?
At this time, no. It would have to be something we'd have to review and look at.
And then, one other thing, that, two other things, really. That whole, that whole design with the road that goes through the water plant, which there's a lot of water, it's obvious, there's a lot of water that comes through there. Mr. Porter and I both looked at that, and if you could approach the city, right there where the little baseball field is, where it hits the private, it's on the right-hand south side of the road, I don't know if you're familiar, there's a little backstop there...
The baseball field is actually up by the city now.
Yeah, so, if you could take that water and divert it, and have them cut it, just a drainage ditch that would run and dump into those arroyas, which is not really very far away, you would probably eliminate fifty percent of that water.
Is that on the north side of the, the water tank? I mean, the water...
Straight west of where the big water tank is, right next to the road.
It would have to go under the road.
You'd have to, you'd have to do a bar, a covert, a diversion deal, under the road right there, but if you could run it right along their property and run it out...
Sure.
Because you've got, I didn't realize that flat was so big until Mr. Porter, we drove up it, we kept looking and looking and looking, and it's just solid flat, so I understand there's a lot of water that comes off.
Here's the other caveat to that, since you guys have got a good visual. Valley View is really a one-car road. The city has allowed it to deteriorate. You can't, luckily for them, they only have their guys go and come, and go and come, except for the homeowners who live on the south side of that road. Is there any way to help the city take responsibility for that?
For us to help the city?
Or, no, 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 just encourage, because it meets up with the county road.
That would be a deal, I mean, we can always encourage, and they need to be aware of their problem. What you need to do is do the exact same thing you're doing here at their city commission.
All right, I can do that.
Because the road is terrible, and I don't know how they get all their equipment, 'cause they do drive big trucks and stuff up through there, and even the bottom end, Tom, the, the bottom end where you go on that city property is...
So, it's not quite a tenth of a mile off of Laloos Road, it's actually county, till you get to that gate, and then from there up, it's city.
There's a division.
And with the dollar coming in, I think that road is gonna become treacherous, and I know when I approached the city, they said, well, we'll just close the road, and I...
You can't.
I think because of the Dollar General coming in there, that we need to revamp the road and completely open that road to alleviate the traffic off of Laloos Road. But, but, now they're, nobody wants to take claim of ownership of the road, and that's kind of where I'm at with the conversations with it, and it is extremely bad, and I think that it's going to cause more public to be on that road that do not, they're not, from that neighborhood, and do not know that that road condition, or that's even closed, and be turning around up there and falling in the ditch. You can do with that road, you know where we're at now?
With Valley View? And getting Dollar General involved, or...
Well, I would like, if we could get this all planned and prepared before the Dollar General comes in, maybe we can talk Dollar General in to put in the entrance on Valley View, if we can fix up our side, their side, and all that, but if we wait for something to happen, then, you know...
It's not going to, and, and my concern about Dollar General is several things. With what you just stated, the property lines in Laloos, the property lines were never lined out appropriately. If you look at Benito Alley, my fence line is right on where my property is, and the other homeowner behind me, south of me, had to move their fence in for the utility services. So, it's possible that the homeowners on, don't have the boundary line. But now, you look at Laloos Road, and what you were talking about when I asked the east side of Laloos Road, that boundary line may be in the utility line. There are homes that are not measured right. Now, be that as it may, I get what you're saying. My concern is, you're gonna have an eighteen-foot semi coming in and out of there on that very, very small intersection. We have buses that run through there to pick up children, many of them on that corner house on the south side of Valley View. We don't have, you know, any, what I wanted to ask you last, that area, it is extremely, if Dollar General goes in, we're gonna have more mess than you want to shake a stick at, because of the speed of cars going through, oh, what is it, Caicadina, down through to Benito, to the Catholic Church.
And you can include Valley View, once they open that up for Dollar General, because people speed on that road non-stop, when, when it was open.
Yeah.
Knowing firsthand, 'cause my brother lost his right leg, to somebody speeding on that road, 'cause we live on that road. So, they're gonna open that up, and that's just gonna, again, increase traffic back in the back end of Valley View, where they just go a hundred miles an hour. The whole Dollar General thing is, like you said, they're gonna have semis coming in with product for the store. That road is not designed to hold a semi, at all. It's, it's basically asphalt with gravel on top of it. That's our paved road, that is not gonna hold a semi.
And that is the main thoroughfare going up to the canyon.
In and out, in and out of Laloos.
So, I, I'm just trying to impress upon you, this section is gonna be a bad, bad Now, I understand the county has no authority of zoning and permitting, and the homeowners, the quintuses, selling their property to Dollar General, but you also have to consider, too, that Dollar General going in there is gonna displace a whole lot of water coming off that, that plane, and is our bar ditch really gonna hold that on the west side?
It's not gonna be sufficient.
Yeah, most of, the Dollar General that I've seen come in, have put in a very big retaining ponds, they buy way more property than what they, the little building sits on, and they, like, the last one that I, they just built out by Bold Acres, the retaining pond out there is huge, way more than, but it's running on the property they have that will hold everything, which will help some, but still the road running there. One other thing, Mr. Porter and I talked about yesterday, and I'll get Tom to add lib on that, is that feasibility study that we talked about on the drainage, trying to put in for that, that grant?
So, again, commissioners, if Laloos falls under a category of a colonias, and they wanted to do a drainage study on it, again, I've been looking at it a few yesterday, we're very limited on what we could do on the east side of Laloos. I'm not sure, and we're talking about Dollar General going in there, what are their, I haven't seen a set of plans on this, on where they're looking at going on entries. I doubt very much that he would consider Valley View.
They want Laloos Road.
They want Laloos Road, which, that's their only option.
How is Laloos Road gonna support those trucks?
Well, believe it or not, Laloos Road originally was a state highway.
No, I know that.
So, it was built to state highway specs, don't get me wrong, it's gonna take a pounding, but it already does with the contractors running their dump trucks across there daily. I mean, we've got both gravel pits out there, north of town, come out through there, if they're going to Wildcroft, so, I mean, they are already using that road. We just chip sealed that road three years ago, four years ago, and, I mean, you can't tell we did it, but that's why with Alamo Street, we did the work we did, it's actually built to highway spec. I mean, eventually...
Well, I just have a hard time thinking that when I'm wanting to leave my home, three houses down, and I wanna make a turn, and there's a forty-eight-length big truck fixing to turn into Dollar General.
It's gonna take both lanes.
It's gonna take both lanes, because, you know, Laloos Road has the, the, what's it called on the side of the road?
Grading.
No, not the grading, but from the highway to Cloudcroft down, you have where you can park your car, the shoulder, and then it stops. I mean, you don't even have...
We don't have a shoulder.
We don't have a shoulder from that one point forward, and, and I'm gonna find those plans, and if I can get your email, send them to you.
They'll have to, eventually they'll turn them into us anyways, 'cause they're tying into one of the county roads. But, you know, I haven't, other than hearing about this, I haven't seen or heard anything else, you know, they're coming in, but nobody's saying when, or instructions.
Yes, and I was also told there's the possibility of something else going into that flat area, and I don't know what it is yet. So, you, I just want to impress upon you our concern there. This is for our community, our kids, our families.
And what other Dollar General goes directly into the middle of a residential neighborhood?
Is there any way we can stop it?
I mean, this, it just seems utterly ridiculous that we're having to deal with traffic, we're having to deal with flooding, we're having to deal with the construction of it.
And then the riffraff's gonna come.
And, and then, you know, they wanna build this, and I know what the state is saying, they're saying, it's providing jobs for people in the community. They can't staff the twelve they have in town.
Exactly.
But they're gonna put another one. We had two on the highway, a family Dollar and a Dollar General, Dollar General's still there, which Laloos has perfect access to, family Dollar closed 'cause they couldn't have enough business, six, nine months into it. That's gonna happen to this Dollar General that you, that's gonna be allowed to be put in there. I know that's not you guys saying, you guys can put it in there, but this is gonna create headaches for you beyond just the store.
And, you know, you were talking about your truck turning, I'm sure Dollar General, their engineers, they've evaluated this, I would bet you they've designed in some type of a turn-in to get, to be able to get those trucks in and out. I, I would...
Do they ever have to come to you when they finally, what you said, connect to the, the county road? Do they have to come and present their plan to you?
They don't have to come in through plan and zone, won't they? No?
So, is the city and the county, or the general area, have no say?
Specs and the highway specs of, you know, tying into that road?
It, it falls under the extraterritorial zoning area of the city, but the city has to choose to enforce that, and it would mostly just be in terms of building and design.
Laloos is not a city, it's a village.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
So, we, we don't have a mayor, we don't have attorney.
Our B is a resident. Yeah, so, extraterritorial zoning is outside the city of Valamo Gordo, and extends from three miles from the city limits, and so, I think Tom checked it with me, but it's within that three miles.
Yes.
'Cause the, the limits are on like eighty-two. But the city is not, as far as I know, actively enforcing any aspects of that for the most part.
Okay, so I need to see the city council.
It helps, I mean, you can also get them involved on Valley View.
Yeah, oh, I am.
And, we, we do have driveway permits, but like, it's, usually it's not denying it, and I've thought about where this is supposed to go, and if it were going off of Laloos Road, but I don't see, I see, I don't see a basis for us being able to say no when we have other businesses on that road that already have had access, like the bus company that became a thrift store, you know, it was right off of Laloos Road, and then there's brewery.
That's way on down.
It is way down there, but still... Where there's a road in its shelter.
That's not our boundary.
Yeah, yeah. And as far as semis, you know, I see semis coming to make deliveries to Laloos Market already.
Yes, they do.
You know, and, and handles it. I agree with you, it's not ideal, I just don't see any way that the county can legally exercise anything to stop it. I think a, a publicly-driven action, getting the community together to get signatures and, you know, get everyone riled up and, community, you know, that is successful in some areas. But I would still go to the city. You know, I think if there's, there's a lot of public outcry against it, I, I don't see the economic driver to be there, 'cause the one already failed on Alamo Street, and Laloos Market's there, and Laloos Market's still gonna get the business, 'cause they're gonna sell alcohol and cigarettes, and so...
Absolutely.
You know, everyone's gonna go there still. So, there's, there's a lot of things weighing against it, and I think an organized, active, public outcry against it could tip the scales against it. Could the county require certain regulations as far as speed bumps, traffic signs?
Four-way stop there.
Something that would, that would, Dollar General would incur the cost of, that wouldn't cost the county a penny, make them have to pay for the upgrades? Not that I can think of, off the top of my head, everything that we are going to be able to, after the county's cost. Putting up signs like saying, slow traffic down, warning signs, speed bumps to slow the actual traffic down, I mean, is that something that... We can do all of that, but we can't make them pay for it. So, so it's gonna be on taxpayers.
So, as far as the speed bump side of it goes, county has stayed away from that, just for the liability of what it does to traffic, so we'd probably never see a speed bump in there. Trying to do another three-way intersection as far as stop, we have to get a traffic study done, and I don't believe what as close a section road is, and the intersection of Main, Alamo, and Laloos, don't think you can get away with another intersection right there, it's too close.
But flashy signs?
Yeah.
I mean, we can do...
I mean, we can do that.
But that's gonna be a cost that's incurred by the county.
It is, and those stupid signs are ridiculous.
Which is unfair because we're subject to, they decide to put it there, now the county has to start paying for stuff to accommodate them. Doesn't that seem highly ridiculous?
You have no idea.
Money that could be going elsewhere.
Oh, why, trust me, yes.
I mean, like, the counterargument is they're gonna say that they're going to be paying GRT, which goes back into the fund and likely meets the cost.
But for how long, Harvey? I mean, they're open for nine, ten months.
Yeah.
I mean, how long, what's, I mean, that's not really a valid point.
Yeah, I'm just saying what they would say.
Yeah, I know, I know what you're saying.
But I, I completely agree with you.
One other, one other thing before, going back to the water in the, on the west side of Laloosh Road, on your alley that you're talking about between Benito and what, Cali, whatever, that other street?
Iacadina.
Yeah. The water department, Tom, two years ago, removed that culvert.
Yes, because of this crash. A car smashed it up.
Probably need to replace that.
No, the county didn't put a new one in there.
The county didn't remove it.
Eddie Luarez.
Nope, nope, the alleys are not the county's responsibility now.
Right. I mean, I understand that, but Eddie from our water department removed it because a car just ran right up the middle of it.
Okay, so they, the water department should have replaced that. Or the, the village, whoever is taking care of the alleys and stuff like that.
Okay, that's the part that's a sticky wicket, Mr. Completely.
Nobody wants to add up to that.
Because that is, whoever built the area didn't put in there that homeowners are responsible for replacing the alley culvert. But that puts a liability on the water department, which is something.
Any utility.
So, we burned it as best we could, but that still didn't, our six-inch that we had replaced a few years back is getting exposed because of this flooding. So, twenty years, twenty-five years in that community.
And you had another item in here, you were wanting to do a bargitz, is going down Benita? Isn't that?
No. Uh-uh.
We, we wouldn't address, look at that yesterday, too.
That's one of the things that one of the employees had mentioned.
Oh, okay, so.
Oh, no, I, my only question would be, what about section?
We're gonna bring it right down to Laloosh where it, where it's coming in anyway.
That's true.
And I guarantee you, the property owner that lives at the intersection of section Laloosh, I'm not getting shot.
I hear you.
Oh, that's the guy with the bushes and stuff.
Yeah, I, I hear you. So, my takeaway is a flood survey grant, we're familiar with colonias grants, maybe collaborating between the Water Association and the county. I'm good with that, but we'll, we'll talk about it in our board meeting next week.
Yeah, it'll be, they're due in March approximately. So, we can put together something for that funding, and then we'll do just like we did with Ben and Twin Forks, where we apply for the, the funding for the study. And then, once we have the study, the next year we'll apply for money to, to do something.
And then, did that meeting ever take place with Harlan and, and Susan Payne and everybody about the flooding and all of that? Did, did we ever do that?
No, we haven't had another one that I, that I, that was involved in.
I would like them included, somebody unrepresented in that group. And what was, were there, what was the result?
Well, we, I'm talking about when we, this was a long time ago, when we talked with Susan and the whole commission.
Oh, last year.
Yeah, so that's what I was thinking of.
Yeah, there was, there was some emails about doing a new meeting. I do have an update on the work that we're trying to get with the Corps of Engineers. I can give it now or later. But there's essentially two pools of funding we're trying to get. One is likely, it's for a study. Pablo and I met with the representative from the Corps of Engineers yesterday. And about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what they will do it for. And it will, it will analyze the flooding issues countywide and, and possible solutions. And the benefit to it is going to be giving us studies and information that we can use for grants. Without that stuff, we're not very competitive.
We have to do the study first before you can do your BDR.
Yeah, gotta have a study to study a study. It's all a bunch of bullshit, but it's how it works. But the Corps is going to do it for us, and, and that will likely happen in the next year. And, and, and take about twelve months or less. So we, they said they could probably have something that we can start using FY26. The other thing Congressman Vasquez put us in for, in the Water, the WARDA, which is the Water Resource Development Act. I previously told you that it had been approved by both houses. The act was, but Otero County is only in the House side of it. And so now that they've both been approved by the House and the Senate, and we may or may not make it, we were listed as a top ten priority project in the House side. So hopefully that helps us get into the final bill. But it's called a three-by-three study, and would be about three million dollars. And it was three-by-three, a lot of, a lot of data for future grants and funding. But we'll have to see if we make it into the final version. And, and then Congress has to actually get their work, their act together and, and pass a funding bill to be able to fund that, even if they pass it. So, we'll see.
And I can't remember if I said it out loud or if I was thinking it. And if you get on the agenda with the city commission, can you let me know? I would like to attend.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your time, and appreciate the time.
And there is a lot of approach to that, so I'd encourage you to take a look at that and then kind of follow some of those steps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll take a break real quick. And number fifteen is not here, so we're gonna pull, pull that one. And we're gonna take a real quick break.
Hello, right here.
Everybody back? Okay, we are back. We're going to continue. We're going to move on to unscheduled citizen communication. This is limited to three minutes. Gwenna Reese?
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
My name is Gwenna Reese. Haven't been here very often. One thing I heard on the radio the other day of that they are doing a forest, section of forest, that the mistletoe is killing the trees. This was on Nadia's sites. She had to plant other trees in that the mistletoe can't kill. Now, years ago, quite a few years ago, I was very concerned about the forest. I could see the trees dying and then another tree. The only thing I knew about mistletoe when I was a kid, if it was hanging somewhere, you went and got a kiss. Now, mistletoe is killing the forest. Years ago, I can't remember the guy's name that was little green leafy thing to, because I told him, I said, "The trees are dying when this thing goes in there, and then it'll move over and it'll kill that tree and it'll kill all the trees." And up here in this forest, those trees were falling, and the forest wasn't doing a damn thing to them. And so I got a box and I filled it and I took it over to the fairgrounds where they said to take it, to have it checked. It came back, it was nothing. Now they're saying that there's a mistletoe is killing the trees. This has been going on for years and years. It's absolutely, has destroyed that forest. Not only has the Forest Service destroyed it, but then they get their orders from Washington. And if there's not some way to get Washington out of the state where it's interfering, because those people don't know what's going on. And, but when I saw that, it was absolutely, why couldn't they have come up with mistletoe when I took all those things in? And they said it was, wherever they sent it, that it was nothing. It's absolutely beyond me. Why that we sit here and do nothing about everything that's going on in that forest. So, oh, and there is a mistletoe that will get rid of, I guess, any tree, so.
Sarah Drinkwater?
Hi there. My name is Sarah Drinkwater. I'm a resident of Alamo Gordo. I, I'm sorry that I wasn't here last month. I wanted to be. September 11th was my mom's birthday, so I was in Albuquerque with her. And she actually chose physician-assisted suicide last month and passed just about a week, a little over a week after her birthday. So, I've been thinking a lot about the death of family members. I haven't really lost a whole lot of family members in my life. I'm pretty fortunate. And I think about people offering me condolences for my mom, and I don't really feel like I need them. She was 67. She'd been struggling for years with COPD and emphysema. And she passed surrounded by her family lovingly, peacefully. I don't need condolences. But I keep thinking of Eva Hadley and the fact that she should be celebrating her son's birthday tomorrow. And I guess she, she still is. They are having an event in honor of his memory tomorrow up in Mescalero. And there is a protest planned this Saturday for him as well. It's beyond appalling to me that the only source of information about the wrongdoings of the Otero County Sheriff's Department come from local and even not terribly local news media. The fact that it took dozens of people protesting to get any kind of comment from Sheriff Black about the incident is, as is back on active duty, and despite the fact that multiple people have reported that he is, they have, he has responded to their calls, the Sheriff's Department refuses to answer whether or not he is on active duty. People get put on hold. They get the transfer runaround and zero mention of it today. I understand that there is a legal due process that must be followed. I understand that and I support that. But this were the two and a half minute, not even, statement from Sheriff Black last month and state police press releases.
Thank you.
How do I schedule a scheduled statement with you guys? Do I just email you? Who do I, thank you. Okay, thank you ma'am. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Koi Griffin?
Commissioners, Koi Griffin, Otero County resident. I just, I want to take the time today to once again get you guys to really pray and and thinking about, again, to consider the fact that whenever the county officials certify the election, the county assumes the liability of the legitimacy of that election. That is why they leave it a yes-no vote on the county level and force you to vote yes. The fire and the trouble begins at the point of certification. All the others after you are just saying, "Oh, well, we're just heating the form." And it's regardless of who the winner is. You know, it doesn't matter if it's Trump or Harris or whoever in between. The point that matters is the integrity of our elections. And I believe that all three of you would question the integrity of our elections. There's not a county in the state of New Mexico that doesn't have greater leverage than Otero County. All the work that we've already done, all the money that we've already invested in audits and resolutions and public hearings. We heated to the public, to the demand of the public, whenever we pass those resolutions to get rid of the drop boxes, the mail-in ballots, demand voter ID, all the ways we secure our elections. That's all on record. I'd ask you to, to get Roy to, to look up all of those resolutions, to get you those resolutions once again. All the work that we did around election integrity, you need to ask Roy to do some research and get those resolutions before you and reread them. Reread them and think about what was going on at that time, because what went on at that time is fixing to go on again, I'm very afraid of. Our elections have never been more compromised than they are right now, especially now we've had the border open. So, it's your duty. You're bound by your oath. You're not bound by laws and protocol and procedures. You're bound by your oath. Your oath is before God. Don't be bullied by him saying you have to follow the law. No, you have to follow the convictions that God gives you because your oath is to Him. And, and don't be afraid. Just do what's right. Do what's right for the people. It's a historic time. You three Commissioners could have a very historic place. And I know that that's not why you will do what you will do. Do what you do for the people. Because if we don't start now, if we don't put our foot down now, it's going to get harder and harder. And soon there will be no hope. We still have hope now. We can, we can stop the steal. We can stop the fraud when we stop the certification. And God bless you guys. I'll be praying for you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business. Number 17, request approval of resolution number 10-10-24/113-16, setting the annual fees for wireless telecommunications facilities.
So Commissioners on items 17 and 18, these documents were drafted by Mr. Williamson, and I see that he has left. So I don't know how much help I can be. He did tell me these, but that these, these items are necessary with the development of the ordinance.
Don't these 17 and 18 go with the discussion we had earlier on item one?
Yes, exactly.
That we approved that?
Yes. This is just guidelines and setting the fees that we, that way they don't have to change the ordinance every time we adjust things or change fees. We do that by resolution. Similar to the subdivision ordinance, you set fees separate by resolution every year.
Here are T-taxes, I'm assuming?
And I'm looking at this. I have too many windows open. I apologize.
People try to come in and we lose that opportunity of, of an annual income. And if that $250 is enough to offset what we may not be seeing here.
Well, it does state that it's on an annual basis, on the rights-of-way fees, which is, yes, annual.
So is that enough?
Well, we're not getting anything now, so it's, it's going to be income we've never collected before.
Right. So like on the solar panels, they do like, on the counties that are aware of the opportunity of more charges, I think it's percentage by monthly is what they pay annually. Is that something that we want to consider or?
I'm sorry, just don't know enough about it.
I don't want to lose the opportunity. I mean, we could readdress it next year, but.
Yes, yeah, you can, you can upgrade, update these every year or even sooner if you choose to ask staff to bring it before you. The ordinance just states that you will set fees every year.
And these are in line with what the other counties are doing?
So we have.
We don't want to be charging more.
Well, I don't want to lock it out either, but I don't want to lose an opportunity. But, so a new tower that pays the county the application process, $17,500 is what it says. And that's just the new application. And, and I read in here, non-refundable. Yeah, that's the only thing that I had question about is that 250 annual. We thought that's enough, but I guess we could see.
We can set it now and then we can have further discussions with Mr. Williamson about, and see how the first year goes.
Anything else?
No.
Questions?
No.
We ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay. Right, I make a motion to approve resolution number 10-10-24/113-16, setting the annual fees for wireless telecommunications facilities.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we want to just vote on number 18? Does anybody have any questions about it?
No questions.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
All right. I make a motion for the approval of resolution number 10-10-24/113-17, wireless facility design guidelines.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number 19, request approval to appoint board members to the advisory board to keep Otero County beautiful.
I did not find anybody else.
Okay.
In my email.
Do they know about the missing name?
No, they do not.
Do they need to see that email?
Just too good.
And Commissioners, sphere of awareness per the, the ordinance in the, this is the first appointment for this board. So per the ordinance, the majority of the board is to be appointed to a, a two-year term. And then, so that would be three. And then two others chosen will only be appointed for one year. And the purpose of that is to get it staggered. So it's.
It's just two.
But.
It's a board of five.
It's a board of five. So three will be appointed for two years and two will be appointed for one year. That way every year, there's at least a consideration of new people for the board.
So you're going to pick five of these seven?
And you have to select three that'll serve for two years and two that'll serve for one year.
And we're sure we're not missing any names?
From what I have, I believe we have everything other than Barbara Cobal that I was missing.
So are we picking the five?
Yeah.
So you said we're picking three for the two-year and two for the one-year?
Two for the one-year.
Okay. I would like Barb Cobal for two, I'm doing two years now.
Yep.
Barb Cobal, Tommy Harrell, and Rodney Eaton.
Did you, did you say Tommy?
For the two-year, yes.
I would go with that, two. And then I, I like Holly for the one-year and. I'm not sure about the other. I don't know.
I, I liked his write-up. That's why I paid Sven, just because the amount of information they put in his letter. It's Rodney, Holly. And you said Holly. And is it Sven?
Sven.
Sven.
I think I did Holly and Sven for the two, for the one-year.
Did you say Sears?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it looks like for the two-year, we've, and I think we're all in agreement. Did you agree with us?
Mm-hmm.
So for the two-year, it's Rodney Eaton, Tommy Harrell, and Barb Cobal. And then the one-year is Sven Sears and Holly Orbeback. I'm going to look and stand that right.
Do we have a vote on it?
Yes, please.
I make a motion that we approve the names as presented?
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number 20, request the Board of County Commissioners select and prioritize the capital outlay projects for submission to the New Mexico Legislature. And I think we really need to rethink this because we're never, we, we've had these same ones on our list forever, and we're not getting any money.
And, and I know at least one of these projects we now have listed as being phased, so we're not asking for all of it right at once.
And on, on the public safety facility, there has been some money, David provided some money. It's got zero money funded on that already.
I do not have any funded by a state source that I have been told about, no.
That just came out of his money?
Probably. And I haven't been told about it, so I can't include that until he lets me know. I'll get with him. And you are asked to pick five projects, and please list them in your priority.
Animal control's number one.
It's not on here.
I know.
Yes.
Number one.
I'm pretty much the first five, hell, they go.
This public safety facility is the one in Chaparral?
Yes.
Yeah. Tom, have they already done a feasibility study on that railroad crossing bridge?
No, that's what you just asked earlier.
The $400,000?
The $400,000 that we voted on today.
Oh, okay. I don't know why I was thinking that was for something else. So our gentleman that came and talked to us earlier, two, three months ago, that's supposed to be up there fighting for us and.
Zach Cook.
Yeah.
Is, is he going to be able to participate with us on some of this, like when we do the presentation on the?
He won't necessarily be here at the presentation. For one, you have eight minutes to present. And the chair is presenting, so she has to spit out five projects in eight minutes. She's going to know the projects better than him at the moment, because he's been waiting for you to select these projects, so I can sit down with him and go over them one by one. He will be up there, though, during legislative session, fighting for these projects.
What we did last year was good.
He came and should work with the chairwoman to put her presentation together.
Okay.
I'll issue.
Okay, if you want to.
That'd be good.
I'll have him reach out to you.
Okay.
I, I, I will still prevent you, provide you with the report and the projects. That's, that's, he doesn't have that.
Because last year, it went really well, how we presented last year.
Yeah.
And even several legislators said they appreciated Otero's presentation, because some of them talked freaking forever.
Right.
And it was a long day. It was a long day. So.
Alphabetically order?
Well, they do the.
You have to do them in a list of priority.
I mean, the counties present alphabetically?
And you've got counties, and you've got the cities and villages. Everybody's up there. So it's a lot, yeah. And it's Otero, Lincoln. I don't know who else is up there.
No, they do one over there.
Yeah. But it was a long day. I mean, we were up there all day. All right.
So what happens if we build this, our public safety and general morale, and we 100% fund it, five years from now, it's completely done, and Chaparral incorporates? Do we get reimbursed for any of that, for anything, or?
Not likely.
Because they, you can use this as a tool to incorporate.
Yeah, we, you know, if, let's just say they incorporate, they haven't even started collecting taxes yet. You know, they're, they're not going to be in a, in a position where they can even start purchasing and funding and building. They're going to have to go after grants and capital outlay themselves. So it would, I mean, I guess we could always come up with an agreement and, yeah.
You would still have the Sheriff Department down there.
Yeah.
And you still have any of the volunteer fire departments down there. And your animal control's still Otero County. It would still be there. So I don't know how.
It wouldn't be within, well, because we, we don't provide for an unincorporated entity. So if it ends up following.
We could lease it to them and they could, just like you do all these other deals.
Exactly.
Okay. Well, I have that as my number one.
And we still have a, well, we wouldn't have the county, the road department down there either.
Right.
So, I mean, I think there's ways we could get around it.
Balance.
Yeah, and make it, lease it to them, a facility. We're still going to have Sheriff Department there, though.
Okay. I have that as my number one.
Public safety.
Yes.
And that was your number one, too, and that?
And then for number two, the guard rail, and that's only because we already have $250,000 to fund it towards it. The Sacramento Guard Rail. And then three, road equipment purchases.
The who?
Road equipment.
Road equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I put four, the railroad bridge, because we just approved $400,000 for it.
I just, I don't think we're going to get any of this. When you ask for this, these big amounts, it just, you don't get them.
We need to make sure we throw a couple of the little ones in, because that's what you're going to get.
I know.
Period.
That's why I.
That's all we've ever gotten before.
Yeah.
It, the little ones, the sheriff vehicles. And then hopefully Matt can get his vehicles out of there, too.
Yeah. I would do sheriff for emergency services, five. One, two, three, four, five.
So we have public safety, and then the guard rail, and then road shop, and then sheriff fleet and emergency service fleet. Okay. I'm okay with that.
Okay. You good with that? Did you guys get that?
I got that.
Okay. All right. Can we need to vote on this?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. I make a motion to New Mexico Legislature.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Commissioner Mather, what have you been up to?
Well, first off, I want to apologize for missing the Thrive cleanup deal. I heard that was a big success. I went around and looked at some of the deals they did. They did, I mean, it's 100% difference in their looks. So hats off to them. I've been to Colquitt meeting in Chaparral, been to two other of their local meetings down there. I sat in on a very interesting dispatch board meeting. Thank you, Vicky.
You're welcome. You are welcome.
Did a Zoom meeting with the Texas DOT. They're doing, they're trying to get up, working up correlation deal on dangerous highways and stuff. It was a, they touched very little, just the tip of, get very much out of it. I sat, I went and attended the, Amy was part of it. It was hats off to them through the judges, trying to get the middle with the.
Diversion program.
There you go. So that was, it sounded like a very good operation or concept coming in. I hope it works and whatever they can do. I got courthouse meeting with, oh, that was it. Oh, and then I was one of the judges of the Homecoming parade, which was, it was.
Oh, woo!
It was, and there was a lot of participants, 44 or 45 floating there. So it was, it was a big turnout. So that was, it was really good.
Go Tigers!
So, and that was it.
Okay.
Okay.
I got to sit in for a few minutes of the dispatch meeting until I went to executive, and then I went home. I went to Lumberjack Days. I spoke at the pilot program launch for the diversionary project, diversion project. Went to the fair. Went to Taos for a meeting. We finalized, I hope, animal control ordinance for our final meeting. That was a couple of hours of good, good talk. So November 2nd, I think.
7th.
7th is when we approved, I have to put that in my phone, November 7th, for the meeting for that, to be heard for the public. King Camile and praying out the Book of Matthew. And gosh, if we're praying so much that voter turnout is a result of it, we're going to keep on doing it.
We're good.
Yep. And I went to Pastor Anthony's movie at the Flickinger Center, which was very good. Went to a women's empowerment luncheon, which was amazing. It was very good. Went to that apple festival and ate too many apples and got a bellyache. And my daddy actually asked me to bring, have you bring some apple? asked me to bring, have you bring some apples? I didn't have forgotten. So I need to get some more apples. And I went to a state police retirement, 100% Otero housing meeting this week, which, you know, we do a lot of talking about a lot of things, but I think we're actually getting somewhere, I hope, with that. Naco resiliency on Zoom, I voted yesterday because the line was too long on the first day.
She was crazy.
Yep. And then I, I was going to participate in the Thrive Cleanup, but it was all big equipment. The location that I wanted to clean, they basically needed loaders and all that kind of stuff. So I just went and said hi and said, "Good job." And we went, I'm just going to say, and thank goodness for Sheila volunteering her husband to do that because I don't think it would be successful without that. So thank you. And then I've been involved with many statewide election integrity initiatives. So everything is going very well and I believe in order for us to help with election integrity and, and make sure we have voter confidence is to make sure that we have boots on the ground watching, passionate about election integrity. And Otero County is subpar, I'm just going to say. We haven't had any problems. We have problems in other places in the state, but Otero County is not one of them.
Good.
And went to the Weed, what brought me to question the contract. Have we finalized that contract with Weed? Where are we at on the playground and where are we at?
We, so, right now we are in just a month, a month essentially that has been going on for a long time. But per that, all previous leases and any future lease, they are responsible for the day-to-day maintenance. If it's something structural, then that, or like a permanent fixture, that's the county's responsibility. But like fixing toilets, changing light bulbs is their responsibility.
So does that mean we can do the playground now?
So we've done for grants as a nonprofit that they are. There's some that are available to nonprofits that aren't available to a local government. So, and I'm pretty sure we've sent those to them. I've got to call the state and ask them some questions about the lease. And if we, if the way I want to do it is okay with the state, then we can move forward. If it's not, I'm going to have to go back and talk to the residents and convince them that it's not going to be the end of the world if it has to go out to bid and that no one wants it, even though I think it would be a great canvas putting out there. But, but it could be a good idea for the county, but I digress.
Get iron weed, weed store and weed.
I mean, it just sells itself, the T-shirts and bumper stickers.
They steal the signs all the time.
Yeah.
Sometimes you got to work with what you got. But, so I may have to go back to them and have a talk, but we need to get back to it and get it done. I understand the lights are kind of like, they're tricky because it's not like just changing a light bulb. They're specialized and they're up high. So, you see, the other, some of the other issues are dependent on what the way forward is with it because, and then we got to decide what we're doing with the building. If we're going to tear it down or something, then we shouldn't put money into doing repairs before we do that. But the problem is, is some of those quotes we got a while back is regardless of what we do, it's going to cost money. It costs money to tear it down. It will cost money to renovate it or rebuild it. So I know Paolo was looking for federal money to make it like emergency relocation site. Makes sense for the fires and stuff, but I, I don't think he found anything specifically that would work. But I think I saw last week FEMA spent all of its money on illegal immigration and, and now they don't have money for the hurricanes or anything else. So that's probably a dead end right now. That's kind of where we're at.
Okay. Well, then had something interesting with the forest department pop up last month. So on my other hat, we assisted FEMA during the flooding because they had trailers that need to be recovered out of a field. And we went up and provided our service, got paid and moved down the road. And then I got a phone call from what they, what they identified themselves as Alamo Dispatch on my business line saying they wanted my S number. What is this? What is this a calling rate? Because Kibbe Tabuta always identifies themselves very well.
Right.
So I was asking questions, S number. And I'm like, I don't know what this is. Who, who is this? And he said his name. And I, I said, "I don't know what you mean." And he hung up on me. Well, I called the number back and asked for that person and he was unavailable. I asked for the supervisor. I wanted to know what's going on because this is a direct reflection of my business and what I'm doing. And I thought it was all business related. And then the supervisor got on the phone and I told him that I was hung up on. I don't know what S number is. I don't know what they're, what they were calling about and all of that. Well, found out that it was dispatch from the Alamo Gordo Airport for the forest service that was trying to do some cleanup from the people that worked for FEMA. But he didn't explain that to me. That was explained to me two weeks later. And I said, "Well, for one thing, when you have somebody calling from your office, they should identify themselves and they should explain what's going on with their questions." And he says, "Well, I think it was resolved." And I said, "Well, it's not resolved because there's no customer service here," whatever. So then it is, where is the customer service? And is this, how we treat our businesses that support you? And so then it escalated and I got accused of belittling the phone calls recorded to give to him, which also shows me losing my cool because it was insane. And I was hoping Jason was going to be here because my request was I want to see the certifications of the trainings for customer service and the treatments and, and leadership for that manager out there. And I, I still am going to pursue that because if this is how we're treating our local businesses, it needs to get fixed. And I'm not going to accept the federal government belittling our businesses. So that is number one priority for me.
Yeah. Good job.
Yes. I'm on top of that.
I bet your S number is a SAM's number. When you do business with the government, sometimes required to have a SAM's number. When you do business with the government...
And it's a freaking process.
I do it all the time. But you, you need to, I don't call somebody and say, "What's your invoice number?" Not telling you anything, you know, it just... And then we had another interesting with my business. And this is why it's good to have elected officials that are out there in the community and all this kind of stuff. So we had an accident on the bypass with a container that rolled over. Now, we recovered it and it was, we had this accident here because it was due to the conditions of the bypass.
The whoop-de-whoops.
Yes, that's right. The whoop-de-whoops. And that container went through the, almost cab, the driver's cab of that door.
Wow.
And turned over. I mean, it took us an hour and a half or whatever to recover it. So the, the road shut down, went to one lane traffic and all that. So I figured it's going to go on deaf ears having Josh call, but it didn't.
Oh, good.
So I got a call from Aaron yesterday. He asked if I had any pictures of the accident and I said yes. And so today he is actually meeting with that. They've lowered the speed limit on the bypass as of yesterday. It went to 45 miles an hour for that stretch. And they are looking for funding today to fix the bypass.
Good. That's awesome.
So I'm going to stay on top of that too.
Awesome.
It's all good stuff.
That trailer on the little flatbed trailer that stuck about 20 foot and a half.
A 20-foot trailer on a 40-foot load? That's the one.
Sounds safe.
I'm not going to say that. It's the bypass's fault.
You talked about Pastor Anthony Torres a minute ago. A few months back, the hospital paid his back taxes on the deal and now there's a for sale sign.
I seen that.
What, do you know any?
I don't.
I don't know either.
Okay. I just wondered.
So that's pretty cool.
That's all I've done. Nothing.
Yeah, yeah. Nothing, right. Sounds like you've been busy. Okay. Since our last meeting, I set up in Mandar Otero County booth at the state fair and it was very successful again. We had really great participation from local people sending stuff up for me to display. We had Heart of the Desert Pistachios and Wine, McGinn's Pistachio Land, Nichols Ranch and Orchard, the Alameda Park Zoo, the Flickinger Center, Cloudcroft Brewery, White Sands National Park. And Derek Bash made me some amazing 3D jet models to represent Holloman that were really cool. And the New Mexico Museum of Space History sent stuff this year. So that was very well received. Attended the county fair, worked in a couple of booths out there and bought a animal with my fellow commissioners. Yeah, that was pretty cool. Bought us a pig. Worked in the federated, with the federated women at the fair to assist the buyer's dinner. And we also hosted the reception for the yellow jackets that were three veterans returning from their honor flight to Washington DC. And that was really cool. We had a great turnout and it was, it was really nice. I hosted a meet and greet at the Chamber of Commerce to welcome the new Fort Bliss Commanding General Kurt Taylor, to get him introduced to Otero County. And we had a really good turnout and he will be really great for us to have a connection. We asked him about the 506 and we got a good hookup with that. He knew all about it and he's going to try to help us get that moving. So that was really nice. And they contacted me the other day because I told them about the F4 we're going to put up out at the Maverick by the old Walmart. And I think he's going to give me a tank.
Yay!
Wouldn't that be cool? I know. You never know till you ask. I attended the Sacramento Foundation Forum at the Flickinger Center. And that might be something that Weed can benefit from too, because they give to nonprofits. So we might, and they have a grant writer now. We met her at this forum that she'll help write grants. She helps find them and helps write, write them. So we might, I might talk to her about Weed, see what she can do to help us there. Went to Roswell to the New Mexico Cattle Grower Southeast Regional Meeting on a Wednesday, spent the night there and then drove to Los Alamos on Thursday for the New Mexico Association of Counties Board Meeting. And I'd never been to, actually, I don't think I've ever been through Los Alamos. You have to be going there to get there. You don't drive through it for anything, but it's beautiful up there. And we did some nice tours and saw Oppenheimer's House and a lot of neat things. And I attended a reception the other night at Holloman at Colonel Etheridge's house. Had a lot of military leaders there and other elected officials and business owners. And it was really nice. So that was good. And then last night I attended the board meeting for the, our history museum here in town. So that was really good. So that's what I've been up to.
Commissioners, you know I haven't been in, so I didn't have time for a big report, but I did think of a few highlights. A few months ago, I had told you I was working with the state forestry. They had called me. They had some extra funding to do a project on Dry Canyon. I have finalized that work plan with them and I have a notice to proceed. And just for your information, this is going to treat 22 acres of overstocked county road right away along the length of Dry Canyon. It's going to remove merchandisable hazard trees, trees infected with the dwarf mistletoe that we heard about today, and reduce hazardous fuels within 12 months. And then Sylvie and I went to the Otero County Processing Center yesterday, a regular meeting with the warden and also the VP of MTC. He is outgoing and we get a new VP in starting this week, so I met with him. And ICE had heard that I was going to be there, so they asked to join in our meeting. We met with the field district representative for ICE and her staff. And we had discussions about lots of interesting things and numbers that we weren't aware of that were quite shocking. But most importantly, as you know, the last few years we've been fighting to prevent that facility from being shut down. And they have finally agreed to help SNF fight. So they are meeting with legislators and trying to tell their story about why they're there, what their goal is, their job is public safety. And it's not just to detain people and mistreat them. So it was a really productive discussion. So we're going to work with them in any future communications and efforts this January. They're not willing to come to a public meeting and they're, you know, they can't sit here in a commission meeting and talk to you, but we can schedule meetings outside of that if you'd like. And the only other thing I can think of, I took eight county college classes in September. I am now pursuing, pursuing my certified HR certification and finance professional certification as they do pertain to my job. So, and that's all I could think of on short notice. I apologize.
That's a lot.
Morning Commissioners. Just a few things to hit on today. The Thrive Day of Caring, I think that went well. I think it is a way to accomplish some of the goals that we have for the county at a much faster and efficient rate than we have otherwise. And I think with the approval of board members for, for keep Otero County beautiful today, we can get them going and they can potentially look at starting initiatives that are similar to this and that occur more than once a year. As long, as long as we have some, some volunteer power and a way to angle it that the county is getting something of value in return for any effort that the county puts out or equipment, we can make some progress on this stuff. So looking forward to seeing that getting going. I was at the meeting with the new Fort Bliss General and then there was also the commanding general for White Sands Missile Range there as well. And it's productive, the new general, like right away mentioned, "Oh, I owe you guys $2 million for a road." And I was like, "Yes, yes you do." And that, but he was going to check in to see where the claim was and what was going on with it. He wanted to get the money for those repairs for heavy vehicles anywhere near that road because he doesn't want to pay any more money going forward. So that's good. Just need to get them to deliver. They should be awarding, speaking on that topic, they should be awarding some of the contracts for the five concrete crossings very soon. So I'll check and see where that's at. Yesterday and some, some good info came out of that and information sharing. As we, as we talked, it brought up like, you know, one of our priorities is watershed restoration, getting the water into the aquifer where it can be used. And, and they mentioned they were working on a project to, to look into all that. And I think all three of you were at the Soil and Water Conservation Annual Banquet last year where there was two guys from New Mexico Tech that that's exactly what they're doing. They already have the data. That is what they know. So I was like, you know, New Mexico Tech has it already. And so I got them the contact info for those two gentlemen. So hopefully that helps them help us. And I also made it clear our situation with White Sands and the water going out into the basin there and becoming unusable. And that's why we need to capture it earlier. So they were going to reach out to White Sands and the Missile Range and see if there's already existing data that they can utilize. So hopefully a lot of good comes out of this project that we're working on with them. That's all I got for right now.
Okay. And the apple festival. Throw that in in your spare time.
I do have a question. Will you guys be availing projects, funding that were given in its prevent and twin forks?
October 24th, 9:00 AM?
Mm-hmm. I'm good with that.
Yes, we're all looking at you.
I can make it. I'm not sure he can.
There's something else to add to that. I was thinking earlier we could do a special meeting.
Oh, no. I won't be here.
Okay. Do you guys want to do Wednesday, the 23rd?
Did you say October or November?
October.
Oh, October.
Yes. I have to have this submitted by the 31st. So I was just trying to...
Wednesday's good for me.
Wednesday?
So we're doing the 23rd?
Nope. That's not good either.
Can you do that week, Gerald? No.
Okay.
Week before.
I can do it the 20thirtieth.
Probably have to check with Christie and see if she can still get those submitted in time. Probably have to check with Christie and see if she can still get those submitted in time.
Can you do the Monday?
Next Monday?
No, the 28th.
He said not that week.
I'm the week after though.
Yeah, but I'll be, I'll be home, I'll be, I'll be back Monday night.
Okay.
I got the 29th.
29th?
Are you good the 29th?
I can do the 29th.
Okay, 9:00 AM?
Yes.
And this is for what?
This is for the colonias grants. Let me see. We received $27,000, I'm not sure...
It's to approve the audit, we got to approve spending it. And Wilson is, is going to be carrying out those, those functions.
Consider animal ordinance meeting was November 7th at 6 o'clock.
Correct.
And we can add approval of a letter in support of the Altus Award to them, too.
So we agreed on the 23rd at 9:00, is that what we did?
Yes.
Okay.
And November 7th at 6?
Yes.
Okay, that is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Yay, thank you.
Sylvia, what date is the ad for that?